Please stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the Open Publics' Records Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Goals of 1975, this meeting has been duly advertised in the Atbury Park Press, issue of June 16, 2016. All municipal clerks of the townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified, and the requirements of posting of notices have been met. Take these as one or separate?
Yes, C1 to C5.
I'd like to take C1 to C5 as one. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any questions?
Mr. Asitola?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mr. Carolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Sotero?
Yes.
The approval of the minutes from June 5? Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Rocco?
Mr. Asitola?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mr. Carolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Sotero?
Yes.
Communications are maintained on file in the office of the Board Secretary. Mrs. Sampson's report?
All right, so a number of items to discuss tonight as we are rapidly approaching the end of the 2016-17 school year, and an awful lot to be proud of this year. So graduation is set for Thursday. We have staggered graduation. We went to that a couple of years ago to try and, in some way, work with the significant number of twins and triplets that we had across the district attending multiple high schools. We can never quite get it perfectly to help all groups, but we certainly make the effort. This year, one of the anomalies of the graduation ceremonies is that Howe High School is scheduled to be at Freehold Township due to the construction of the turf, so Township is a result of that slated for 2:00 p.m., and Howe is slated for 6:00 p.m. Usually, we don't have any graduation ceremonies that occur prior to 4:00 p.m., so it's a little bit of an anomaly this year. And then we have Manalapan at 4:00, Colts Neck at 5:00, and Marlborough and Freehold at 6:00. So there's an awful lot of work that goes into preparing that day to make sure that our students have a phenomenal experience, and the family members that come to enjoy that with them also have a phenomenal experience. So we're looking forward to that day. Tomorrow, we have, one of the things that we do here, I think that's a little bit different than most districts, is any of our new staff that are slated to begin in the subsequent September, we bring them together for a new staff orientation that happens prior to the summer. One of the things we've discussed a lot is that, you know, you get hired in the school district, and you're often hired in April or May, and then, you know, you're sort of told your assignment, and the summer goes by, and there might be an orientation in August, and you're sort of left to your own device for a couple of months. We like to get ahead of that here, and what we'll do is we'll bring all the new hires together in June and go through a number of things that they should really be thinking about to be a faculty and staff member and to teach high school students in the modern era. And I think that's a real important day for us to begin to set the tone of what our expectations are here in the school district. We also, we utilize the executive student cabinet on that day, so what they'll do tomorrow, because it's one thing for us to say what the qualities of an effective teacher are, and it's another thing to actually hear it from the students. So what the executive cabinet does is they present to the new staff members what they want to see in a teacher, and what they want to see in a faculty member, and what they expect. And what they'll do then after that is they'll transition the new executive cabinet, student cabinet, for next year, and we do some, you know, some collaborative activities between those two groups. So that's all slated for tomorrow, so we're excited for that. On June 28th and 29th, we have our leadership retreat. That's a two-day event that we do every year. We do it, obviously, here in the board office. No exotic locales. Everybody chips in for bagels and coffee. But one of the things that we're, we read something every year. We read a book every year, and, you know, usually, I like to theme things that we're doing and what we're approaching. And this year, the book that we've selected is Originals from Adam Grant, and the subtitle to that is "How Nonconformists Shape the World." And what it really is is just a way to challenging your thinking about how you can bring innovation and change to a place, and sort of debunking some myths about change. And we do a lot of our reading about the change process and helping to push folks through that. So that's scheduled for the 28th and 29th. The 28th will be a whole day that I'll sort of host and facilitate. I've got some, we're going to go through a real cool process this year. And then on the 29th, what we do is we work more specifically with the building principals about goal-setting for next year and really being tight around our action plans and the work that's ahead of us. So, you know, we've just come out of, we just turned the corner on the end-of-the-year celebrations, and sort of, you know, we've celebrated everything there is to celebrate in the school short of graduation, and so now it's sort of finishing final exams, making that last push. But one of the numbers that I want to share that I'm real proud about for next year, so, you know, we've, we've really had some earnest work around providing students with more opportunities and more demanding courses. And so next year, as a result of that, across the district, we have 558 different students who would otherwise have not taken a particularly demanding class, taking that class. So when you talk about opportunities and what that means long-term, we took 558 kids that I hope in some way we altered that life trajectory. And one of the powerful pieces of the student feedback that we got from the 1,400 alumni that filled out our survey was that a significant number of them had said they either wished they had the opportunity to take more challenging courses, or they wished they had challenged themselves more in high school. And to see 558 students on a student population of about 10,000-plus do that is, I think, a remarkable feat in one school year, so we're really proud of that. And that concludes the report for tonight.
Ask a question?
Yes, sir?
It's kind of off-topic. Big picture. But there's been articles in the newspaper about Steve Sweeney and Vincent Prito's education funding plan, and they still have to meet with the governor about it. And the articles and some release, I guess by maybe NJEA, told you which districts were going to get cut and which ones were going to get more funding. And thankfully, we're not mentioned there as getting cut, but my question is, there's some districts in our region, in the K-8s throughout our region, that are getting cut, and then there's one in particular that's seeing an increase. Would you happen to know, when they say Marlborough, K-8s overfunded, or Manalapan's overfunded, what was the criteria that they used to decide that one of those districts was overfunded?
So I'll open it, and then kick to Mr. Boyce for specifics. So the mechanism they use is adequacy spending. And so there's a number that is determined based on, you know, what you should be paying per student in district and what that looks like. And some districts are either overadequacy or underadequacy, but it's much more complicated than that. So the School Funding Reform Act was passed in 2008, and it has never been fully funded since that first year. And what happened was each subsequent year after the year of the bad budget, when 5% of our operating budget was reduced, districts were held flat at state aid. So your state aid number stayed, quote-unquote, "flat." The difference there is that districts that had declining enrollment obviously received the same amount of aid. That's the case here. We've had a slight decline in our overall enrollment. Districts that saw a sharp increase in their enrollment also saw the same flat aid, so they ended up being more underadequacy than some other districts. But it's not quite as clean as that, because what ends up happening is when the state determines what adequacy is for a school district, they look at the district's local fair share of their ability to pay and equalize property value. Stop me if I get off here, Mr. Boyce, because I'm really into your neck of the woods here. Yeah, I've been listening, you know. But anyway, they use those two factors, but what ends up happening is they use different multipliers to determine what that is, and you don't know what those multipliers may or may not be, so there's some mystery to it. So, and one of the things that we testify to here is that, so we, when I first arrived here in 2011, we were under adequacy by about $4 million. We're now slightly over adequacy. Our per pupil spending has remained very, very low compared to other districts, neighboring districts and comparable regional high school districts. When you look at our total property value, and we testified, and Mr. Boyce really helped me with this before the Senate Ed Committee a couple of months back, that our local property value had risen by something like 4%, right? Over a period of a couple of years. But our determined ability to pay had risen by 38%. So that widens the gap. And then to fill that gap, you get this, what's known as adjustment aid or hold harmless aid. And so our argument to the state has always been, wait a minute, we're incredibly financially responsible. Our per pupil costs are very, very low, and the formula doesn't adequately express what our property values or our ability to pay may be. We don't, we're not quite sure how that all gets factored out in the mix. So when you talk about the most recent proposals, there's, we don't know yet how they were arrived at, what that determinant has been to get there. And so while we're happily on the outside of that, looking at no reduction, we can't quite understand what mathematical processes were used to arrive at that. And Mr. Boyce, if you want to add to that?
Yeah, you know, what we do know is the amount of money that we get. We also know the amount of money we're entitled to per running the formula, although we're skeptical about some aspects of that, but nonetheless, these proposals, proposed changes in state aid are neither of those things. And there's not enough information that has been provided by the states to say how they decided whose aid will get modified. And we're talking about for the 17-18 school year, which starts in a couple of weeks. So I've reached out to some of my colleagues in other districts that were cut, that we would be seemingly in the same situation as, and they were, and, or they were, we weren't, and, but they don't know why either. They're in crisis mode because they're doing what they need to do over the next couple of weeks, and we're fortunate not to be in that situation right now. But the short answer to your question is, we don't know what the variables are there that bring these modifications, proposed modifications, to state aid.
Thank you. Yeah, just one point of clarification, too. You know, I think any funding formula that inherently creates winners and losers is a problematic formula. And so when you're robbing Peter to pay Paul, you're going to perpetually sort of redraw those lines. It's a very politicized way in which that might come about, and I don't think it necessarily takes the best interest of students in the state into consideration. And when you start really, I think the SFRA at face value is a pretty good formula. The difficulty has been, there's a couple of things that need to be modernized there, like special ed population not being tied to the census, but short of that, it's a formula that tried to address differences in districts for, if you have X number of ELL or special ed students in, you know, high-poverty areas and what that looks like, and it just never got out of the gate in terms of funding, and that's the difficulty. And, you know, when sort of the candidate gets kicked down the road over an extended period of time, it gets really, really difficult to come to a resolution that, you know, isn't going to be one where you're going to have a significant number of folks upset or happy about it. You know, in our backyard, you know, Freehold Borough is under adequacy to the tune of, I think, 8 million on a much smaller budget, so a significant, some real, real sharp need for some relief there. How it all plays out, I just hope that the decision ultimately, and how it's determined to fund it, just looks at all students and doesn't, doesn't take the short-sighted view of sort of that results in winners and losers.
Thank you. Public participation. Fabiano Sempe? Please come up.
During my time at Freehold High School, I had few teachers that I really connected with, and no teacher would ever have connected me as well as Dr. Holman did. It has been over six years that I've been out of Freehold High School, and I still look back at the many conversations and hard, hard moments that I shared with Dr. Holman. For most people at the school, Dr. Holman was just the school psychologist, but to me, he was a caseworker, a mentor, and most importantly, a friend. I was always comfortable talking to him, whether I was having trouble in school or in my personal life. I would go to talk to him regarding any school matter rather than approaching my guidance counselor, because he gave himself more readily available. I understand he didn't have to do it, but he did it out of the goodness of his heart. I first met Dr. Holman in the summer before my freshman year of high school, due to my learning disability, at the Red Bull School of Engineering. At our first meeting, he only became acclimated not only with the school setting, but also with my upcoming schedule for that year. He ensured that I would be comfortable maneuvering through the building with ease, and that I would have the necessary support through my teachers. From that moment on, I knew that Dr. Holman would be my advocate throughout my time at FHS, and that his door would always be open when I needed his support. Having him by my side helped me lift a partial weight off my shoulders. As it came to being my caseworker, he would always help me find the best solution to help me relieve my stress, focus on the important aspect of what school was really about. He showed me that even though school can be challenging, pushing through the hardships and working for what I believe in was an angle. One of the major things that Dr. Holman helped me see during my time in high school was that the amount of work you put into a situation shows determination and desire to succeed rather than just continue to adapt. This stuck with me after my time at Freehold High School and motivated me through my time at college. After graduating from Freehold High School 2011, I went off to Stockton University and graduated in four years with a Bachelor's of Arts in Sociology and Anthropology. I'm currently a substitute teacher in the Freehold County School District. I've been working with elementary-age students in a school setting since I was high school. My desire to work with children and help them grow can be attributed to the care and gratitude Dr. Holman gave to me during my time with them. The demeanor and respect I showed to the students that I worked with were instilled in my, in me through Dr. Holman. I feel that over the years, the Freehold High School family has come together for many events, both good and bad. Whether it's a team winning state championship or a deficit saving loss of a student, I have known the Freehold Borough community to unite and fight for what they believe is right. Today, coming together for Dr. Holman is a cause that I believe is important and beneficial to the future students of FHS. I feel about the students, and most importantly, the Freehold High School staff that he has connected and worked with over the years to show their gratitude and pay respect to a hard-working and caring man.
Thank you. Rosie Amoroso?
Hi, my name is Rosie Amoroso. I'm from Class of 2011. When I read the article about Dr. Holman in the newspaper, I did not believe the words on the page regarding the firing of Dr. Holman. I graduated in June 2011. My high school peers were fraught with anxiety, and I suffered from a learning disability. My Dr. Holman was my best friend at the Borough. He was always available to give me advice and guidance through my upsetting situations at Freehold Borough High School. If I didn't meet Dr. Holman, I wouldn't be as successful, and I wouldn't be alive today. The words describing, the words describing him leading to his dismissal do not attest at all to the counselor or the person we knew. We fear that there's something not quite right in the demarc, to quote Shakespeare. The action taken by the district appears to be being taken too quickly, and as reported with his being able to fully address the matter. If that is true, then that is not the American way of giving each person his due process. I fully support Dr. Holman. We grew to know well and respect. We ask that the matter be reviewed. A good man's reputation means, and we insist that you be given the opportunity to address the pains against them. Thank you for your attention.
Ms. Samoroso? Ms. Samoroso? I just wanted to just take a second. Number one, thank you very much for your comments. Number two, I think there's been some confusion as to maybe the process, kind of how everything played out. I know that the articles made it seem that Dr. Holman was not afforded an opportunity to respond. He was not afforded an opportunity to defend himself. Nothing could be further from the truth. So the TEACH-N-J statutes require a very lengthy process before a tenured employee is dismissed from employment. They require a file and servicing of charges, advance notice. The employee then has an opportunity to submit a written response. That's at the local level, here at the board level. That took place here last September. The matter is then transferred to an arbitrator, who conducts a hearing. In Dr. Holman's case, there was 12 hearing dates with an arbitrator, 15-plus witnesses testified. Dr. Holman was represented by four separate NJEA attorneys, but 95% of the time, three in the room at any, at a given time, for a given hearing day of seven-plus hours of testimony. After that, there was extensive follow-up writing and briefing, and then the arbitrator, who's a neutral party, okay, issues a written decision. That is what was reported in the newspaper. So I know that there was some confusion that things might have been done hastily, or there might have been some confusion that that was, that article or that decision was the beginning of the process. It actually was the culmination of the process that was set forward in the statutory scheme. So I just wanted to clarify that, so that, you know, the due process was afforded here to the maximum degree.
Joseph Turner?
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Joseph Turner. I am a social studies teacher. I teach in Mount Clair now, but I graduated from Freehold High School in 2009. I'm also speaking on behalf of Dr. Holman. I want to talk as a community member, I want to talk as an educator, I want to talk as an employee. So as a community member, I love Freehold. My grandparents, they moved here in 1965. They've been living in the same house since 1965. All of my aunts and uncles went to Freehold High School. My sister went to Freehold High School. I love Freehold High School. I was always involved in extracurricular activities. The first time I ever spoke at a board meeting was in 2009 to propose to talk about lead for diversity of the program at Freehold High School. I was always involved in leadership at Freehold High School, and the first time, I'm not proud of Freehold High School, of the district, of the way that it has been played out in this scenario with Dr. Holman. And so I drove two hours in the rain to be down here today. I live in Clifton now, and I drove two hours in the rain because I know that Dr. Holman would do at least that for me. I worked with Dr. Holman for four years in high school, and he has always been invested in me as an individual, and that investment is not something that you can quantify. There's been a lot of talk, speaking now as an educator, about per pupil. Our per pupil cost is low was something that was said here as a point of pride, that the per pupil cost is low. It seems like a very dry sense of what I feel educators do to have a talk about someone being, or a school being under adequacy. For that, I feel like that takes all of the life out of what educators do and what education is supposed to be. And I always felt like Dr. Holman saw me as an individual, as a person, not as a, what is the per pupil cost that I'm going to spend time with Joe Turner for 40 minutes out of his day? He never quantified that. He never thought about it in that way. And so for me as an educator, it pains me to hear the board talk about a school district and what they do in a cost-benefit analysis, this kind of perspective about human beings that are in the room, that are in our four walls for the time that they're with us, how we can make their interests heard and respected and honored. And so I have a few questions, speaking as, again, a community member, an educator, and an employee. So first of all, as a community member, I mean, like I said, my grandparents have been living in the same house since 1965. How much money has been spent that my grandfather has had to pay for litigation with Dr. Holman?
Why don't you ask all your questions, and we'll address each one of them?
Sure, absolutely. So my question again, as a community member, how much money has been spent litigation for Dr. Holman? I have a question as an educator, on what basis do you feel that removing Dr. Holman is in the best interest of the students at Freehold High School? I would love to hear an answer for that. As an employee, why was he not given a corrective action plan if there was an issue as a tenured teacher? From my understanding, I know you said that he had a written response in September that he was involved with. This starts back in April of last year, where he was being accused of something that then was completely unfounded scientifically, that he got a medical hearing of not being, the accusation was unfounded back in April. If there was an issue back in April, why was, why was the process not properly followed from that point to give him, for example, a corrective action plan to fully go through that process? Those are my few questions.
May I present, can I? So the first part is, is how much money was spent? I don't have the exact dollar number for you, but I can tell you that the board's legal costs were approximately $100,000. from start to finish. Okay? What was the basis for removal, you asked? I refer you to the arbitrator's decision, the 40-plus pages.
Yes.
There's ample evidence as to why the arbitrator found, Mr. Turner, let me finish. There's ample evidence in there that answers that exact question. The arbitrator found basis for removal. The arbitrator found that it would be ill-advised for Dr. Holman to be returned. He made the determination. He ordered the termination. As for the, why was there no corrective action plan? Well, how do you know there wasn't one? Number four, you said accusations were unfounded. I would say, we don't discuss personnel matters in public, Mr. Turner. The Department of Education chose to post the decision to its website. The board took no such action to do that. That was the action taken by the Department of Education, which is fine. That's under the new law. That's, that's, that's how, that was decided, and that's how it's evenly applied. And then you indicated about accusations unfounded. I would disagree with you, sir, and refer you again to the arbitrator's decision.
I respect your thoughts. As far as arbitrator's decisions, I've reviewed them. And the idea that it was ill-advised for him to return was not what was in question. The question was if he had conduct unbekoming of a profession. And the arbitrator said that it was ill-advised for him to return. Why was the decision not aligned to the initial accusation of conduct unbekoming? And even conduct unbekoming wasn't the initial accusation. The initial accusation had to deal with steroid use, which was then found to be unfounded, to answer your question about what was unfounded. That specific accusation was where all this started, is not what was founded. And then when that was proven to be false, then we talked about What would be your response?
I'm not going to debate you or debate the arbitrator's decision. He made a reasoned, lengthy decision following 12 days of testimony from 15 witnesses. He made factual determinations. I disagree strongly with your recitation of the facts, your understanding of the facts, and the board itself will rest upon the findings by the arbitrator.
So, you fully backed that decision?
The arbitrator's decision?
Yes.
It's out of our hands. The arbitrator is a neutral party that is selected by the Commissioner of Education to make findings of fact and then to issue penalty. The arbitrator made findings of fact and issued the penalty of removal. There's nothing for the Board of Education to do.
So, you're saying the board does or does not fully stand by the arbitrator's decision?
I think I've referred it to you, and we put our trust in the process. We put our trust in the laws that have been set in place. We follow that, and the end result is in front of you.
So, to get back to my, the way that I phrase the question about the basis of his decision, on what basis do you believe that his removal is in the best interest of students at Freehold High School?
You would have to direct that to the arbitrator or refer to the decision.
So, does the board believe that his removal is in the best interest of the students at Freehold High School?
The Board of Education took action to certify tenure charges, to send the matter to the Commissioner of Education, for the Commissioner of Education to make the determination whether or not he should be terminated. That decision has been made, Mr. Turner, by the Commissioner of Education. Again, I'm not sure what you're seeking from the Board of Education. I'm not sure what answer you want, other than the process was followed. And you're an educator.
Absolutely.
You understand the process. It was followed. So, I'm not sure, sir, what more you're seeking from the board, what statement, what validation you're looking for.
Sure. And speaking as an educator, I think what we do always is in the best interest of students, their education and well-being. So, what I'm asking is for that, in backing of why his removal is in the best interest of students at Freehold High School.
We're going circular, Mr. Turner. I refer you again to the arbitrator's decision.
I have an answer to that question.
I can't, listen. Mr. Turner, I refer you to the decision. And I'm sorry if you can't find solace in that decision. I understand you disagree with it. I understand you feel strongly.
All I'm saying is if that's your backing of the decision, then the board does fully back that decision as a trick. Is that your?
I think I've answered the question the best that I can.
Mr. Turner, we are prohibited from, my name is Sean Boyce. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Business here. We are prohibited from discussing personnel matters. We are prohibited from discussing personnel matters in public. So, there's, it's putting the board, and I'm the Chief Financial Officer of the district and Risk Manager, there's, we cannot choose to not adhere to that requirement.
Okay. Again, I was looking to speak of why that was in the best interest of students at Freehold High School. I always hope that every decision is in the best interest of students. I would hope to have heard something along those lines, that everything we do is in the best interest of child's education and their well-being. I would hope to. Thank you so much.
I am a 2014 graduate of Freehold Borough, and I'm here today to speak on behalf of the remarkable man that many of us know as Dr. Holman. It took me hours to write out my statement, and it's just because there aren't enough words to express the type of amazing person that he is and was. But on the other hand, there aren't enough words to describe the outrage, hurt, and anger us students and parents feel about this decision and heinous accusations made against this man. This man's career and life has been ruined because of this. But the man, he also changed my life for the better, and I think that's something that was looked past. I knew about Dr. Holman before I had been stuck with him at Freehold Borough in 2010. Older siblings of my friends would tell me and my friends how awful he was and how warm and funny he was and how his words always seemed to give them a sense of comfort. I began working with Dr. Holman in the start of 2011, which was my sophomore year, dealing with a lot of family issues. And I never imagined that my work and time can evolve me into who I am today. From my first meeting with him, I felt at home. His office became my sanctuary, and I felt safe. And there's just no better word to describe it. He taught me some of life's most valuable lessons, and he taught me how to love myself. High school can just be some of the toughest years that we go through. We go through heartbreak, and we deal with rumors and bullying, and it comes with our high school territory. But the administration at Borough failed me in my times of emotional turmoil, and Dr. Holman never did. He never gave up on it. There were times that administration members would see me crying in the hallway. Their way of handling that was to say things like, "Go to the office," or "Let's class." No comfort, no kind words, not an ounce of sympathy, not even, "Are you okay?" They never showed their students kindness and understanding, and punishment was simply the solution for everything. In the fall of 2011, a pilot class was run called Avid, and the staff who ran the program stressed the fact that those who did not attend college will go nowhere in life, and attending community college simply was below their standards. They preached that going to a four-year school directly out of high school was the only way to go. And they tended to forget about those of us who couldn't afford it, and those who had no other choice but to work a full-time job after high school. And if you couldn't attend a four-year university after graduation, you were a failure. Because of my amazing family and Dr. Holman's advice, I began working full-time the day after I graduated for a small pharmaceutical company. I started Rutgers Community College in the 12th, 2014, and graduated two years later with honors. I'm now preparing to enter into my senior year as a Rutgers University School of Criminal Justice, after transferring there this campus. I've managed to obtain a full-time job throughout my entire college career, while receiving honors and also receiving a major job promotion. I have my own apartment with a boyfriend at 20 years old, so if I'm not following their guide to be successful, I'd say I turned out pretty successful, if you ask me. I can't thank Dr. Holman enough for guiding me away from their idea of the picture-perfect student. The original accusations made against Dr. Holman regarding possible drug use blew my mind. From the second I heard those accusations, all I could think was how enraged I was and how sick to my stomach I was that in the year of 2017, we're still judging people based on their physical appearance. I find it interesting that he passed a drug test and mental health evaluation, but remains the target after being proved innocent. Now, it seems like a whole new web of accusations are thrown on the table because the first allegations couldn't go through. And I also find it important to know how in all his years at Borough, 12 to be exact, he received nothing but stellar reviews up until that April. In my years at Borough, I spent many hours in the guidance office, and that was where his office was located. I witnessed firsthand, more times than I can remember, the type of interaction the guidance counselors would have with Dr. Holman. They looked at him with utter disgust and spoke down to him, constantly with rude and degrading attitudes. Yet, Dr. Holman would always reply to their snarky remarks with a smile. He always took the high road through all the years of mistreatment he endured by them, which I again witnessed firsthand, being a student who spent a lot of time in the guidance office. So, I find it interesting to point that out of all the staff at Freehold Borough, he's the one who will let us be bullied. I hurt for the future students at Freehold Borough, and I hurt for them because they'll never get to experience a session with him. They'll never get to share their experiences, their happiness, or their tears with him. And I'll say this, the administration didn't deserve someone as amazing and warm as he was, but the students do. The department of Dr. Holman shared with the students is something, and owe the counselor or psychologist this fort higher is ever going to be able to replace. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Marie Data. I graduated from the Computer Science Academy at Freehold High School in 2009. I'm here also in support of Dr. Brett Holman, who's a school psychologist. I met with him a number of times during my high school years, including discussing the stressful process of deciding on a university. He was always a great listener and a kind-hearted professional. In my senior year, 2009, my friend and I went to him to ask him to start a psychology book. He was our advisor, and he also managed to help us get teachers, which we were constantly asking him about. As soon as I heard about this awful story, I was in utter disbelief. I instantly pulled my peers to find out what was going on. None of this could be right, and it wasn't. I knew I had to help him. And along with a few other former students, I made a Facebook page to dispel the ugly allegations and get past students together to provide a voice of reason. Less than two weeks since it was started, it has reached thousands of people. I've seen multitudes of stories from former students describing the impact Dr. Holman has had on them and how he has literally saved their lives. Because Dr. Holman, I know, would never do any of those things he was accused of. He has 12 years of positive evaluations behind in that school, which should speak volumes. The Borough family, I knew, would never make such evil allegations about a kind-hearted, professional school psychologist. After eight years, I still have Dr. Holman's card. It was in my wallet all this time. No one else's. I had Dr. Holman's card. Of course, the phone numbers and email addresses that are on here are meaningless because he's no longer there. The Borough needlessly let one of its most important members go. I only have a few questions. I understand you aren't necessarily responding to personnel, but in regards to the case, I did read through the 36 pages or so of the documentation and was wondering why, after he was cleared of the, when he took his evaluations and was cleared, why he wasn't allowed to return to his work immediately?
That would be a matter involving personnel that could not be addressed. As noted in the decision itself, that was not the only accusations against Dr. Holman.
Right, right.
Okay? And so far as the comments about evaluations or anything, the board won't discuss personnel matters in public, other than what was referenced in the decision itself.
And I also wanted to touch back on how you were mentioning the corrective behavior counseling to receive, I would assume, but I didn't see anything in that documentation that was ever given to him except for. But if there's nothing else on that, then my last question would be, if you find in the future, or the case has to continue on, if the allegations are proven untrue, will you take appropriate action to require those that presented those false allegations to undergo a psychiatric or medical evaluation in order to ensure students' best interests? This isn't specific personnel?
I would say this. I would say this. There were 15-plus witnesses who provided testimony over 12 full days of hearing. All testimony was under oath. Every witness understood what that meant. Every witness testified to the best of their ability and to be as truthful and forthcoming as possible. There was no issues in that regard, and the arbitrator made findings of fact after hearing how folks testified, and he made his determination as to what occurred.
So, there wouldn't be, if anything, continued on, there would be no follow-up or any diligence initiated afterwards?
I think any personnel matter would be decided on an individual basis.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your time.
Paul Hoffman?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It appears that on this particular case, there's some more people that want to address. So, may I make a recommendation that I fault my name to the end of the list, go towards the end of the evening, because it's a separate problem?
Yeah, absolutely. That's fine.
Ashley Daniels?
Hi, my name is Ashley Daniels. I graduated in the class of 2009. A portion of my time was spent at Freehold High School, which is an alternative school for preoriginal high school districts. I'm just going to read some high rule for Dr. The path I would have you headed down in high school was a dark one. While others held signs directing you to continue on that path, you were the GPS who guided me to a new route. One not familiar to myself at the time, but for some reason, you believed You believed I would get there. After experiencing many detours and pitfalls over the years, I knew my GPS would always be there for me. Thank you for being the kind person this world needs. Thank you for having faith in me on no one else did. I will fight for you, how you fought for me. Thank you. Thank you.
Zelzliann?
Hello, my name is Zelzliann. I graduated class two thousand nine as well. I have to say, my four years there, I've literally seen my guidance counselor once every day. Dr. Holman was literally there for me when I needed him. If it wasn't for Dr. Holman, I don't even think I would be alive, obviously. He literally was the most amazing person that I've ever met. He was... He never judged me. He never judged anybody. He was there for all of us. And... I literally have no words because this is really crazy. I've known Dr. Holman since before I was in high school because he was there for my brothers. He was there for my cousins. You know my whole life. Like, he was always there.
Danielle?
I graduated from the Burrow in two thousand ten, and if I'm being honest, it's not necessarily a place I have actually desired to come back to. Only... My only reason is because I want to support Dr. Holman. I had the privilege of working with him throughout my four years in high school, and just to keep it kind of short and sweet, he helped me in really more ways than I could ever thank him for. What worries me the most, to be honest, is the fact that current and future students are never going to, you know, have the opportunity to meet Dr. Holman and to work with him. My brother is a senior at the Burrow, and so I've gotten the chance to kind of see, like, over his last four years, really from an outside perspective, what kids go through. You know, when you're going through it, it's different, and then, once you're removed from it, you kind of forget. It's kind of hard to identify. And, I mean, it's rough for them. Like, kids are mean. They're not always nice and supportive of each other. It's not always that school community that everybody likes to encourage and portray. You know, it's reality. It's hard for them. And so I think that's what bothers me the most is that, you know, they're never going to really get that chance to be impacted by someone who had such an impact on me. I mean, honestly, as I'm sure you can tell, he's saved people's lives and he's changed people's lives, and now I feel like he's just being robbed of what he's spent so many years working for and doing for other people. I feel like once he was accused of using the steroids and tested negative, the goal kind of, from my perspective, became to just get him out in whatever way, you know, possible. I feel like it's a little ironic that once such a major accusation proved to be untrue, a case was then built against him based on hearsay and rumors, in my opinion. So I just want to make sure that even though it's important that he has this army of people behind him who he has helped in the past, you know, I just want everyone to know, I'm most sad for the students that are struggling or who may be struggling in the future that are not going to have that safe space to go to because it's really important for high schoolers. You know, they don't always have a parent or a sibling or an adult they can trust. You know, a lot of times, it's like, go to a teacher or go to an adult, and the reality is, it doesn't always work that way. Not everyone is always there to listen. Not everyone is always there to notice when a student is going through something. And Dr. Holman was always that one person that you could go to and, you know, he was... It wasn't just his job. It was... It was his passion. And that's what makes the difference. You know what I mean? That was his passion to help others and to be there, no matter what anyone needed. And I think students are just, you know, they're really being robbed of getting to know such a good person. That's really all I have to say.
Anthony?
My name is Anthony Asta. I met with Dr. Holman during freshman and sophomore here in the high school at Freehold Burrow while I was still in the MedSci program, was two thousand nine to two thousand eleven. We met during the darkest time of my life, when I was going through major family and social problems, and eventually led to my grades dropping enough for my dismissal from the MedSci program after two years of struggling. Had it not been for Dr. Holman, far things worse would be picked up. The MedSci wouldn't happen to me, and I may not be alive today to discuss how much he means to me. After reading about his case in the news, I felt obligated to share my story and the impact he has had. To see the name and reputation of someone so cherished in this community tarnished over a case with some hearsay involved made it very frustrating, but even more so disheartening. To see a school district as prestigious as the F O H S D fail to recognize the value of a staff member who has contributed positively to the lives of hundreds of students, who has saved so many lives and helped so many students, is absolutely terrible. But the worst thing of all is the last thing Marcus will make on Dr. Holman's professional career and the amount of students' lives that he would have been able to change with a better president. I am proud to say that despite everything in MedSci, I will be starting medical school this coming August. When I'm a surgeon one day, I will look back on my academic career and faculty that meant the most to me, those that I could not have gotten my schooling without, the most influential event being Dr. Holman.
Paul Hartman?
Hi, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Captain PJ Harman of the US Army Attorney Company Commander for Southern New Jersey. I represent the Joint Services, that's Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Coast Guard, National Guard, Army, and Air. I'd like to take two minutes to try to condense a forty-five-minute speech so we can get out of here in a decent amount of time. I myself have been a resident in Jersey City, so I also have a two-hour drive down. So I took... I interviewed for this job eighteen months ago, and half the time, I was really stoked to come back to the East Coast. I'm the battalion commander giving the interview. He's a resident of New Jersey himself. Said PJ, you have a great time, but you're absolutely going to be in for a challenge. Okay, sir. So I get back to the East Coast. We live in Jersey City. My wife's an architect. I work in Manhattan. And ironically, it takes about the same amount of time to drive. The Parkway has a curb to pass from the thirty-third. So here I am, three months into it. I absolutely understood the paradigm that exists here in New Jersey. My battalion commander is not able to speak in his own high school up in West Orange, and I'm not allowed to talk about high school around. And why is that? Your students, thanks to all of you and the educators, have a lot of options in this footprint. They absolutely do. And whether they believe or not, they come from phenomenal schools. People, and I absolutely agree with the young lady that was up here today. People see military service as a tertiary option. It's generational. And I don't have time to put it all in context, but essentially, my recruiters, regardless of it's Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, run around fifty, fifty-five, sixty hours a week estranged from their families, trying to talk to the talent, the talented students that are in this footprint. And a footprint where the student debt is over fifty thousand dollars per student. It's thirty thousand nationally if you watch the schedule. The military offers a lot of options for students. Competition strategies get into the right school. I turned in eleven million dollars in scholarship money last year because I could not get that information out to the students. And if anybody's been in this school, and I think most of you have, it's important to see a twenty-five-year-old sergeant who is not from New Jersey standing behind a table. Because for all of those reasons that I mentioned before, no one would ever walk up to that table once a year at the cafeteria that's not allowed to go into or in the guidance office because of Navi On. When the guidance counselor say, hey, the Army, the Navy, the Air Force, Marines are down there, only the students that have an idea that the military has a hundred and forty-six other jobs. There's four combat jobs in the military: armor, infantry, special forces, and artillery. You can't name a serious profession that your military does not provide to you. And with that being said, I would like an opportunity to be added normally to your agenda next time the session's on. So I have the opportunity to explain to you in thirty minutes or less the opportunities that exist for your students to get into the right college, stay in school, do better without student debt, and have a guaranteed job. I also have, after the meeting here, a proclamation from the governor, Lieutenant Governor, signed by the eight... Excuse me, six governing bodies of the education associations, everything from the NGA, SBA, all the way down to the President of the PTA, who cried behind a van at our educator's room. She said, you know what, PTA, for the last twenty years, I've absolutely done what you said, and that is to keep you out of the schools because of the paradigm that I have. So, ma'am, after this, I would like to discuss with you about formally being added to your agenda after the next meeting. Talk to me about that.
With all due respect, Mr. Hartman, that conversation is with me, and we've been engaged in that conversation.
And I would have to consider this about four times that I've had to engage.
That's correct. And we'll continue that conversation, but we will ultimately make the determination. It's much more complicated than you're playing it. I'm disappointed that you would come before the board and not simply just continue that dialogue. It's... We make decisions on who has access to our students because they are a captive audience. And we have lots of entities that want that opportunity to engage with our students. We've afforded the military branches every single of the same opportunities that we provide any other post-secondary entity. And the young lady's point was terrific. And I am actually the only non-military member of my family. So I understand firsthand the opportunities that it provides and the opportunities that are there. But they are a captive audience, and we are very restrained on who we allow access to those students and at what point in time. We can certainly continue that conversation, but it's not a simple yes, you can have this assembly for these folks, or no, you can't. And I know that there's been an awful lot of dialogue through my directors about that.
And sir, I would disagree respectfully that we have equal access to your school. So yes, we're authorized the same, by law, the same amount of time as any other faculty crew. So let's say hypothetically, there's fifty colleges who is well more than that that are actively seeking your students and attending their schools. So if they're authorized once a year, that's fifty conversations that they're having versus five conversations for military service. And again, sir, all I'm asking for is to educate your students about post-secondary education opportunities and standing at a cafeteria table or chasing kids after a football game when my recruiters are being frankly disrespected because they just don't know. And so we are chasing students after football practice for getting school lists that are incomplete smiling and nodding. And I hope you've seen it.
No, I haven't seen it. I'm going to stop you right there because, sir, we would not disrespect a member of the military branch who came into our high schools to meet with our students. I mean, that's beyond the pale. I'm sorry. That's not something we would condone, would be a part of, or would ever say was okay to do.
And sir, this is a forecom that I've actually asked an opportunity to be to be personal. And I appreciate this opportunity, ma'am, gentlemen, for this. And I would like to continue the dialogue. I know over the summer's extremely busy. I have some plans going into the fall. But any opportunity I could wish, sir, to actually get on the count of my battalion commander and I, my education and sports practices, I greatly appreciate it.
Sure. We may have some disagreements, but absolutely.
Oh, we always will. Again, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. And sir, I will follow up to that.
Can I make one comment?
Yep.
I'm not a guy in the military. Thank you for your service. I just... I worked in this system for seventeen years, and I think Freehold Burrow, Freehold High School, is one of the better schools in our district, one of the better schools in the state. And I just feel like tonight, I wanted to be a little bit cheerlier for Freehold High School because the faculty and the staff... I've had relatives that went there. They did quite well, and they're doing quite well. So I think there was a little bashing of Freehold High School tonight. And I know many of the faculty, many of the staff there, and many of the students that have graduated there, and it's a good school and one of the better schools in New Jersey. And we don't have to say enough about the MedSci program and the athletic programs and all the programs. Had a couple of good meals there, too. So I just wanted to say something about Freehold High School tonight.
Excuse me?
We see you. Yes.
Hi, can I just go? I didn't have to talk to you.
Go ahead.
So hello, everyone. Hopefully, I'm all a little more happy and on the other phone. My name is Sean Patterson. I graduated from Freehold Burrow High School in two thousand and ten. But I felt like I needed to express to the Board of Education how my four years at Freehold Burrow High School probably some of my most miserable moments there. And it's thanks to that you guys, like, love your jobs and you love your students and so. But I think when it comes down to mental health, you guys really don't care. And you can argue back and forth with me, write notes in your notepad. And the crazy thing is, I think that from starting at Freehold Burrow High School and whatever year that would be... What year would it be started in? I don't know. Because I was always young for my group. I graduated two thousand and ten. I was supposed to graduate two thousand and eleven. But a bunch of bullies. And, you know, you guys can say, oh, my God, that's so horrible. Someone said that to you? But the sad thing is, the comments that were made to me as a student for starting, in the fact that no one... And I'm sorry to say it because there's people sitting in this room. I'm not going to call names, but if you would like me to say them, I can now. I'm twenty-four years old. That would call me a liar for the things that I said were said to me. I was called... I'm bi-racial. I'm black and white. I was called a [BLEEP]. Sorry, guys, if that's uncomfortable. It makes you uncomfortable. I was called a [BLEEP] on Facebook. You guys know what that is, right? So I was called a [BLEEP] by someone. I took a screenshot of it, printed it out, went to school the next day, and showed someone in your office, hey, this is what someone said to me. Can you run us something crazy? Someone tried to say that I photoshopped what I was saying, what this person said to me. They called me a liar. Next time something like this happens, then I'll remember it forever. Just print. Just print. I did. I printed it out. I showed you. He called me a liar, gave me a pat on the back, told me to go back to class, and that was that. Another teacher that I have, which I forgot which girl said it, and I think that she left that, going to Brookdale Community College was looked down upon. One of the teachers, she had short gray hair, and she had glasses, and she goes, oh, you guys don't want to be stuck going to Brookdale. What are you from, Brookdale? I went to Brookdale. I graduated on the Dean's List, went to L A M College, worked for Glamour Magazine, Self Magazine, Vogue, Lord &amp; Taylor. The list goes on. I worked for a lot of great companies. So how dare you sit there and talk about a community college as if that... Anyone that goes to it is nothing. I... My friend, the reason why I went to Dr. Holman is because of one of my friends that went to see them. He sat down. There was times in the lunchroom that I was called [BLEEP]. And I would talk to Dr. Holman about this, and he would say, you know what, Shauna? Come get your lunch if you feel uncomfortable, and come sit and talk with me. And that's what I would do a lot of the times. Maybe every single... One day, two days out of a week because of how uncomfortable. I had alopecia. I was losing my hair. I was called [BLEEP]. I was called a lesbian. And what did the teacher say? Oh, just, yeah, whatever. And that's another thing. I'm not. But what if there are kids struggling with their sexuality and no teachers that are supposed to be, oh, yeah, everybody wants to be cool, give people pats on the back and hugs? But then when it comes to real issues, nobody wants to say a damn thing. Everyone wants to sweep it under the rug. Come on, guys, get to class. You got to do this. You got to do this. You got to go deliver. You got to write your essay. You guys apply colleges in junior year. Nobody's worried about how everyone's doing up here. Just on the outside. When I sit down and I talk with people, because I am in the fashion industry now, and people ask me, oh, my God, where are you from? I'm like, oh, I'm from Brooklyn, New Jersey. I'm not from some city. Yeah, I'm from Brooklyn, New Jersey. Unfortunately, and I hate to put it that way because, like they say, in every race, there's good and there's bad. In every community, there's good and there's bad. But unfortunately, I would never give Freehold Burrow any praise because unfortunately, you guys seem to think for me. Besides, make me have anxiety before going to class, make me feel uncomfortable about who I am. Besides, make me have anxiety before going to class, make me feel uncomfortable about who I am, about how I look. You did nothing for me. Besides, give me a place to, "Okay, it's raining. I have to go to class Monday through Friday." That's about it. Your teachers, I think you need to rethink who you wanna hire. Your leaders that are there to guide your students into being better people, I think you need to reevaluate. I don't know what you guys would do at Christmas parties, you know, talking, "Oh, I have this person I think would be great for the job." But I think you guys need to dig a lot deeper. Because there's some people, and they're sitting in this room, and I, you know, and I respect them all as individuals, so I'm not gonna call them out by name. But Freehold Borough did nothing for me, and I haven't seen a thing come out of it either. I would never put my kid, I would rather homeschool my kid than put my kid in your high school. I would rather sit down and talk to my kid about the ways of life than to put them in your school system. And I even dealt with it from when I was younger. The teachers called me liars, had me reevaluated. I started kind of like four years old. My teachers called me a liar about things. I graduated college on the dean's list. I worked with Kanye West. Some of you guys might not like him. I love him. He's one of my idols. I did things that people didn't think that I was able to do. That called me a liar. So I just think you guys need to really, really, really do a lot of reevaluation when it comes to hiring your staff. I don't know if it's staff, I don't know if it's friends, little powwows, you guys play ball together. I don't know what you guys are doing, but I think you guys just need to really rethink who you're hiring.
Madam President, Madam President, I'd like to say something, please.
Go ahead. You can, Mr. Heshi.
I kept my mouth shut for a long time when I was president of the board, advised by the attorney. I just can't keep my mouth shut now. I taught at Freehold Borough High School from 1971 to 2006. My name is Heshi Moses. If you know anybody in the town, you can ask them about me.
I know. My son was talking.
I know. I remember the last name. But all I wanna say is, all I wanna say is this.
Will let him speak, please. You had your chance.
All I wanna say is this. I don't know about what happened after I left that high school, but the time that I spent in that high school, it was one of the most inclusive places I have ever taught in. I taught in Camden High School. I taught at Howe. I taught at Freehold Borough. And the place that you are describing is really, I didn't interrupt you at all, really. The place that you are describing is foreign to me. I just don't recognize it. I'm sorry you didn't have the opportunity to have me and take my psychology class when I was there because I don't think you would have had the same feelings you have now. I just don't recognize what you're describing. The teachers that I taught with there were caring people. I never heard anybody put down a community college. In fact, for a lot of parents that I talked to, I told them it would be better for them to spend the money to send their kid to York to learn a language and to work than it would be to spend the money because they're gonna go to college and just party. College isn't for everybody. But I never heard anybody put down a community college when I taught there. Now, I'm not saying that you didn't hear that because I wasn't there after 2006, but I just never heard that.
It's cra, I know. Trust me, I agree with you. You wanna know something crazy, Mr. Moses? Do you know who Shannon Reed is or Chief Reed is? Those are my cousins, and they always spoke very highly of you. So I'm not gonna sit here and down anything you were saying because I agree. But the thing is, though, there needs to be more, I don't know if you gotta have a teacher and a aide in the classroom so that way you guys are able to, the Board of Education's able to understand where I'm coming from with these things. But that accusation was made. I'll never forget. Teacher said, "Do you wanna be stuck going to Brookdale or something?" And the one kid already had a sibling in there, and he's like, "What the heck is wrong with Brookdale?" And she's, "Ah, wow. Come on, this guy." No, seriously, that's, what was wrong with Brookdale Community College? There's nothing. I'm not doubting anything you said because my cousins have spoken about it. So I'm not gonna say anything. But what you have to understand from what I'm saying is, those comments were made. Students were doubted. There was a time I was so upset with class, in class, that I had, I already had an appointment to see Dr. Holman. I was upset. I was in science class. I'm pretty sure I had Mr. Moremarko, actually, at the time, because like some type of class, science class. And I was so upset, and I was just like, I really just wanted to go to Dr. Holman's office and just talk with him because to understand where I'm coming from. And he was like, "Okay, sure. Like, that's fine. Like, go ahead and do what you have to do." But Freehold Borough High School, I'm sorry, when it comes to race, do you guys maybe have control about it, but that's really not how you are. The N-word was thrown away, thrown around like it was somebody saying, "Hey, can I borrow that pen? Can I borrow that pencil? Do you have piece of paper I can borrow?" Wait, why are you saying no? What, I'm sorry, were you a student at Freehold?
Ms. Patterson, Ms. Patterson.
No, no, no.
We're not gonna call out, we're not calling out individual members, okay? We've listened respectfully to your comments. I'd ask you, please, to wind them down so that we can proceed with anybody else that may wish to speak.
Okay, that's fine. But all I'm gonna say is, Freehold Borough High School, I don't care you guys agree with me, look away, text on your phone, say no. Unfortunately, no one sitting up here is a minority. So you guys probably wouldn't have to deal with that. Is that a lie? No, no one would call you the N-word. I was a student. Someone did call me the N-word. When I went to a teacher about it and I had a screen print, they called me a liar. How, does that not make any sense to you? So I hope you guys are taking better action when it comes to race because it is very big now. But I'm sorry, no one up here can understand where I'm coming from unless you have, maybe, you can say, "Oh, I have interracial cousins. It's in the pants." Oh, da-da-da-da. Freehold Borough High School did nothing when it came to race. Freehold Borough High School did nothing when it came to sexuality. And that's all I have to say. You can say no all you want, but I'll make sure for as much as I'm on this earth, to make sure if someone asks me where I'm from, I say, "Yeah, I went to Freehold Borough High School," it's the worst year of my life. And you can sit there and go, "Hmm," you know all you want. But I can't wait until something else happens, and then you'll understand where I'm coming from, where a student takes a different precaution because of it.
Excuse me, miss. I just wanna point out that I'm also biracial, and I think it's important that, you know, we all have narratives of our own, and I think people often look at us and they assume that there's no story that we have to tell. And I feel like that's something that just happened right here. Now, that's something that, as biracial people, I think we had to deal with growing up. But I do think that it's not something that should be thrown around so casually in a public setting. So I understand that there probably was not much malice behind that, but...
True hurts. Yeah, I'm sorry. It's true hurts. And it's America, and it's one of those parts.
Public session is closed.
If there's anyone else that has not had an opportunity...
Is there anyone else, you know, who needs to speak?
I just wanna say, for, for Moses, you, I wanna thank you because you taught my aunts and uncles, you taught my sister, Leah Turner, my new brother. And I am not here for a lack of pride in Freehold. I'm not here for a lack of pride in Freehold High School or the district. I'm here because I'm proud of Freehold High School, because I'm proud. I wouldn't drive all the way down here to go back to where I grew up unless I was not proud. And I want to continue to be proud of the district. I want, I have to say, I have been personally taken by what has been perceived by myself as someone who's proud of the school as what seems to be stone faces and a coldness from the board. I would like to have more people that are sitting here be like Heshi Moses and say, "I have to, I have to speak now. I'm so mad about what is happening in the school, and I wanna speak out about it." I love that passion, and I wish that I saw that across the board. And that's what I would just like to say, that I'm not here because I'm not proud. I'm here because I'm proud, and I would like to have the whole board really stand by that question that I had asked, why is this in the best interest of the school? I would wanna know that every single board member stands by every decision because it's in the best interest of the well-being and education.
We do stand behind, we do stand behind decisions that are made. We work as a board as a whole. It's not individualized. I have pride. I was a teacher for thirty-six years, but not in this district. I have pride for my school, and I would defend my school to no end. I don't know what Freehold Borough was like. I've never worked there. But if I worked there and someone tore it apart, I would stand up for it also, like Mr. Moses. So you can't say that the board does not work together. We do. It's just that it's not appropriate for us to have conversations back and forth with people. A decision has been made. It's out of our hands. We abide by what has happened, and that's it. But we do, I do, I have pride for the whole Freehold Regional High School. I volunteer for this. I was elected on a volunteer level. I don't have to give up my time to sit here if I wasn't proud of the whole district as a whole. Okay? And I hope I speak for the rest of the board members, but if anyone would like to say anything, go ahead.
I have one thing I wanna say. I will tell you this, as a board member, I've been on this board for quite a long time, and I've had a daughter who's gone through the district. I've been on this board since my daughter was in seventh grade. And I will tell you this, that any decision that this board makes, and I can speak for myself as a board member, any decision that's been made has always, always been for the best interest of the children.
That's what I wanna do.
I'll, okay. Basically, what I will say is that what every single person came up and spoke about was extremely eloquent, and it was, it was basically an indication that they were brought up well. And everything they said was absolutely true. But you have to look at totality of life, and you deal with people for a particular segment of their life. But time goes on, and your reality is different than other people's reality. So the bottom line is, I think everyone at this table knows what all these speakers said is one hundred percent true. No one's saying that what was testified to today is not true. It is true. But again, you know, there's hundreds of millions of people in this country, and basically, your dealings one-on-one with somebody are not everyone else's dealings with everyone else. So things happen, and with respect to the best interest of the student, you read that decision that's up on the internet that's publicly available, and you read it from beginning to end, and everything in that document, which is all factual, basically that, in my opinion, is what's in the best interest of the student.
Wait, so how do you know? I suppose that you're saying that you know that all these things are true.
Well, I don't know. I'm assuming what you said is true.
Exactly. So going with that, then how many could look, if they all, all we know, we could've said, "Dr. Holman, you know, this could be coming right through the mouth of some people from inside the school, too." Just throwing that out there.
Yeah, but you know what? As Mr. Toscano said, this was a legal proceeding where people swore, gave an oath, that their testimony was true. I mean, you're basic, you know, I don't think fifteen people are gonna commit perjury.
Listen, we have systems, we have systems in a democratic society. We follow, we have systems in a democratic society. Individuals are entitled to due process. We went through an elaborate, extensive due process in this matter. Nothing like, any of these decisions are not taken lightly. They're taken incredibly seriously, and we follow the letter of the law to the T. And in this instance, we follow the letter of the law, and any of the publicly available documents will speak to the trail of following the letter of that law and to the extensive due process that was afforded throughout. No one, you know, I'm sitting here listening to, you know, comments about, we have over a thousand students taking Brookdale courses now in our schools. So I don't know. I support Brookdale. So I'm wondering, you know, the, some, things get distorted when they're put in the press, and when you only see snippets of things that are publicly available, and when headlines sort of distort what may or may not have happened. We, there are protections that are afforded, particularly tenured teachers. They are, they are the most, possibly the most extensive job-related protections in any profession in this country. And to go through that process, to strip away those protections in a legal manner, following the rule of law, is incredibly extensive and detailed and specific. And if you think that no district in their right mind would go through such an elaborate process without following it to the T to make sure that they dotted their i's and crossed their t's and did things appropriately because we have to look at the totality of the scale. So none of those decisions are ever taken lightly. No one ever wants to be on the other side of having to make those decisions. You know, I started just like you as a social studies teacher, right? So, you know, I understand the passion. I applaud the passion. I applaud the commitment. I understand that some of you had more positive high school experiences than others. The issues that you raise are, as a group collectively, are deep-rooted societal issues that, you're right, they're ugly issues that need to be faced head-on in school systems. And schools are the one place that are more equipped than other places to actually take those issues on, I think, in really meaningful ways. So that's what, that's what we try to do. In this particular instance, I understand that folks have had different experiences with, with the individual. That, I applaud it. I'm glad. I'm glad that folks came out enough tonight and felt passionate enough about their experience in a way to come out and speak to it. But at the end of the day, the process, the due process, or the lack thereof that the group seems to think didn't happen, happened. We put that in the hands of a third-party arbitrator who is, who is selected by the Department of Education and by the courts. And it's like anything else. You go through that process. You have no control over what decision they do or don't make. You make your case, and you provide the facts that you have that are available to you, and the arbitrator makes a decision. And we abide by that decision, and that's what happened.
My, I appreciate that. My question then would be, if everything, if we're taking it, the story as if it starts in April or May of last year, from there, cross the [INAUDIBLE], you know, dot in your eyes, what about before April and May? What about when you need to leave immediately? Before the other student...
But you're, you're...
Then that's the...
Right.
If you, if you laugh, when I was saying the lack of a corrective action plan, the lack of a plan before that moment where we had to leave now.
Right. So you're speaking to things that we cannot speak about. We can't speak about that stuff. There was a, you, I will say this, you have to, if you go back and look at the criteria by which these cases are judged, there are clear processes that have to be in place. In order to make a specific case, you have to check a certain number of boxes about what your, what the school system's process has been. And we're beholden to those processes. And when you go through that, and I would encourage you to go read some teach-NJA decisions. And what you'll find in there is where the school systems tend to fall flat is when they didn't follow a clear processy, process. When school systems have followed a clear and progressive process, they tend to prevail in those cases because they're applying the rule of law there. So I would just, I would just encourage you to take a look at some other things. We can't talk about that. You know, we can't give you any of the answers along those lines that you've come here looking for tonight. All we can say is that we, I have a responsibility to the whole district, to the board, the community that we serve of two hundred thousand, the faculty and staff, but most importantly, the students in the buildings. And when we engage in decisions like this, this is not something that is done willy-nilly as a kickstart reaction in some sort of, any way that would be some sort of like vendetta. These are well-thought-out, detailed, specific processes that we put in place over months before we even arrive at the arbitrator's desk. So this wasn't some quick turnaround here. There was, there was, you don't just, you don't get there without a real deep and well-developed process that landed you on those shores. And it's unfortunate for everybody involved because, you know what? I would like to be talking about the thousand kids that are taking Brookdale classes while they're in our schools right now. I would like to be talking about the... I would like to be talking about the clubs you're talking about, Lead Diversity, which is a phenomenal club in this school system, right? That's the stuff I'd rather be talking about at a board meeting. But we've given, we've given the community every opportunity to come out tonight, and, and, you know, normally we're supposed to have a three or four-minute time limit on what anybody says. We didn't hold anybody to that. We were respectful of your passion, even if that was, you know, directed, you know, indirectly, directly at, at anybody up here, because we understand, I'd rather cultivate that in you as an individual in this school system than anything else, right? That you're going to stand up for yourself, and you're going to advocate, and you're going to persist, and you're going to keep moving forward. So we appreciate that. But at the end of the day, the decision, the legal decision with all the accompanying due process was made and was decided on the side of the district. And that's all we can stand behind.
Did you actually read Dr. Holman?
I, I, I'm not going to speak to individual relationships, I can't. That's not for me to say.
And the, uh, the documentation that I did figure out, what you're saying, all of the evidence from the company includes it, and actually the final, uh, board mentioned that really you would not return is because of all this turmoil that happened, and it wasn't, in fact, these allegations, because you destroyed the trust and bond with this man in this district to the point where he's being defamed. It, it doesn't make any sense to us, we are very compelled, very passionate about this, and that's why we can't, we can't just let this go, this is not going to, this isn't the end.
And that, that's fine. I appreciate it, all right?
Is there anyone else who would like to speak who hasn't spoken before? Okay, we're going to move on then.
Regarding the agenda, um, one modification and an additional, uh, resolution as well. Actually, I think you should get a motion in a second, and then I...
We should have it first, Mr. Boiser, if we do it as amended.
Okay, okay. So on item number 12, uh, I'm sorry, uh, K-12, educational programs, um, there is a listing of professional learning, um, community stipends for coaches, coordinators. We need to add one, uh, individual to that list. Um, so the, the name is Christopher Proval as a PLC coach, um, from Howe at $1,000, so that's... Provo, sorry. So that's an amendment to an existing, um, resolution. And then there's an additional resolution, H-15, uh, and I'll read it into the record. Approval of the agreement between the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education and the Building Supervisors Association be resolved, the board approves the memorandum of agreement dated May 23, 2017, between the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education and the Freehold Regional High School Building Supervisor Association, setting forth the terms and conditions for successor collective negotiations agreement effective July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2022, along with the attached salary guides. Said agreement has been ratified by the Freehold Regional High School Building Supervisors Association on June 19, 2017, and that'll be H-15 to include in, for your consideration. So if...
There's some motion, there's some...
If I could take a motion to take H-1 to L-1?
Motion.
Second.
As amended. As amended.
As amended.
Motion.
Comments?
I have to abstain on H-14. I have to abstain, H-14, Cole Cameron, Power Professional.
Yeah, you have to vote, you have to vote.
At that time.
When I, when we vote, then... Rocco?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mr. Corolo?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Lavine?
Uh, yes, with the extension, uh, for H-3.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Um, yes, I abstain from H-14, Cole Cameron, Power Professional at Freehold High School.
Mrs. Sutera?
All right, folks, so I, I want to take a couple minutes to recognize a few folks. So first off, I have to say, we, we haven't had a board meeting over half an hour in, I'm not, I'm not exaggerating, two years. Literally, this is the longest meeting we've had in two years, other than student recognition. So for the folks who are being approved tonight, who brought family members, who brought friends, you know, it, it, it was, it was an extended meeting. So I, I appreciate your patience, but I want to recognize a few folks. So we've really, um, you know, we've, we've, we've had a significant shift in our administrative team due to all good things, right? Folks moving on, getting promotions, getting bigger jobs, moving up within the organization. So it's, it's, it's a good problem to have, and it's a real exciting time, so I want to, I want to introduce a few folks. So Lena Cometa, Selena, can you stand up? Lena will be the new math supervisor at Manalapan High School. She comes to us as an instructional coach from New Brunswick Public Schools with a whole wealth of, uh, e- e- experience, um, with an English degree as, as the, as the first start. So, uh, we had a, we had a, we had an awesome conversation, but, but the work that Lena's doing in New Brunswick, um, has rave reviews, and we're really excited for what she brings to the district. So Lena, welcome. And then Jennifer Delet, Jen, can you stand up? So Jennifer is going to be our new special education supervisor at Freehold Township High School. Uh, Jen comes to us from Rumsen Fairhaven, so local neck of the woods, where she's a classroom instructor but incredibly involved in the district. Uh, and we know that she's just short of the BCBA, which we're, we're excited about, uh, and we think she's, um, she runs programs that are very comparable to the programs that we have at Township, and we know she's going to be an awesome addition to the team. So Jen, we're happy to have you, and welcome aboard. Rodney Taylor, Rodney, can you stand up? Rodney will be the new CKA at Manalapan High School. Uh, Rodney is a lifelong Neptune resident and mathematics teacher at Neptune, currently was the head football coach there, has a worth, uh, a, a world of experience with, with athletics, and is an excellent teacher, and came to us with rave reviews, and we're excited to get him started as the CKA at Manalapan High School. So Rodney, welcome. Some familiar faces. Uh, Mr. Post, can you stand up? So Brian Post will be, uh, the new assistant principal at Howe High School effective July 1. Brian has been the science supervisor at Howe High School three years now, or is it four? Four years, I'm getting old, all right. It goes fast. Um, I, I remember Brian's first interview for an administrative position about five years ago. So, uh, we're excited to have Brian as assistant principal, and we know that he'll do great things, because he's already done some great work for us here as a science supervisor. So Brian, congratulations. Oscar Diaz, where's Oscar? Don't give me a hug, Oscar, just stand up. Uh, Mr. Diaz is currently the assistant principal at Howe High School. He is moving to the central administration to be an administrative supervisor of curriculum instruction. Uh, we're really excited about, with the departure of Dr. Moore to be the superintendent at Hunter and Central, we're really excited about the, the team that we've put together in CNI, uh, and Oscar's going to be a key part of that. So Oscar, welcome aboard. And then finally, Dan, can you stand up? So poor Dan, where's Dan? So Dan, Dan wasn't even coming tonight, and I texted him, and I said, "Hey, it's your last board meeting, let me come and just recognize you." And he, he had a, he had, he had a vacation day today, he's, Brian Donahue was coming, and Dan, Dan came, and Dan sat. So, um, you know, this is, this is Dan's last board meeting, Dan, you know, Dan's done his four-year stint as the Colts Neck High School, uh, you know, and I, I appreciate that Dan has always and will always continue to lead with his heart. He puts students first, uh, he's, he's, he's really a, a guy who makes decisions based on, on, on how he feels about what's going to be best for kids and does it really well and puts them first always. Uh, the high school principalship in this district is an incredibly demanding job. It's a 24/7 job, it's all kinds of hours that come with that, and it's all kinds of commitments, and you got to deal with me barking at you all day long. So, um, Dan, Dan did a terrific job here and, and really, um, really engaged the community at Colts Neck in, in worthwhile ways, and we're really proud of the work he's done. Uh, and he's retiring from public education, although he doesn't look it, but the, um, and, and we just want to wish him, him the best and thank him for his time at Freehold Regional High School District. Thank you, Dan. I didn't miss anybody, did I? We're, we're, we're hiring so many folks, it's like, I, I don't know if I, if I missed
All business?
Yeah, I'd just like to say something. Uh, Mr. Simon, ordinarily, I would thank you for being the principal of Colts Neck Township, but I am an alumni of Biotech, and, which means you were...
Shh.
...high school. So, you know, no, no hard feelings.
New business? I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All favor.
Hi.
Good night.